Okay, is everybody ready to get going? Stand and help me say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, madam.
Alderman Keeler is absent. Alderman McCarthy?
Here.
Alderman Wolfe?
Here.
Alderman Coons?
Here.
Alderman Emmett?
Here.
Alderman Stewie?
Here.
Alderman Danahill?
Here.
Mayor's here, and you have quorum.
Jill. We'll go into announcements. Bremet Township is open for property tax appeals through August 21st. Tax appeal forms are available at our City Hall. Questions, contact Tax Advocate Grace Bardus. Get 708-444-4816. The Oak Forest Police Department is joining more than 200 local law enforcement agencies to increase traffic safety enforcement throughout the month of July. This coordinated statewide effort focuses on reducing speeding, improving safety on Illinois roads, which we need very well. Motorists can expect to see increased patrols focused on speeding and other traffic violations now through the 30th of July. The Building Department is looking for a part-time property maintenance inspector to perform inspections of residential and commercial properties. For more information to apply, visit our website at oak-forist.org. Save the date for the National Night Out on Tuesday, August 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at City Hall. National Night Out is one where neighbors and gather with police officers and businesses to celebrate our community. The event will include food vendors, music, foam party, face painting, inflatables, dunk tank, which I need to stay away from, and more. Again, announcing that the Oak Forest Broadcast Network, the Truck 40 Push-In Ceremony, can be seen streaming on the city website by clicking on CIC TV programming, or can be viewed on cable TV Comcast Channel 4, Astound Channels 1110 and 1112, and AT&amp;T Channel 99. Also today, I received a quick note from ComEd. As we get into this timeframe where it's kind of going to be very warm and we're going to be using a lot of electricity, if people are having any issues with paying their electrical bills, ComEd does have grants that they can give to people up to $1,000 if they qualify. So if people want to do that, they need to go to the ComEd website. Okay? I need a motion for the consent agenda. Alderman Danahill made the motion, second by Alderman Emmett. Ready?
Alderman Danahill?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfe?
Yes.
Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay. Consent agenda. Consider the following list of bills dated: Regular Bills fiscal year 2025-26 and Supplemental Bills fiscal year 2025-26. Consideration of the following minutes: Consumer Protection Commission, July 9th through the 2025. Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, April 10th, 2025. Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, June 26, 2025. Civil Service Commission, June 5th, 2025. Veterans Commission, June 19th, 2025. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman McCarthy made the motion. Alderman Wolfe, second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfe?
Yes.
Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Alderman Danahill?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Great. We'll move on to administration. Approval of Resolution 2025-07-0495R, adopting the City of Oak Forest public participation and comment policy. If we need anything to see attached from our city administrator, Moses Emadi. Motion? Alderman Emmett made the motion. Alderman Wolfe made the second. Anyone have any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Alderman Danahill?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfe?
Yes.
Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay. Finance Department. Approval of Ordinance 2025-07-11010, amending the city code to implement a municipal grocery retailer's occupational tax and municipal grocery service occupation tax. And we will go to Finance Director Colleen after we have a motion. Alderman Danahill made the motion, and Alderman Wolfe made a second. Colleen, you have anything to share?
Just a little background that the General Assembly passed an initiative to eliminate the statewide grocery tax of 1%. This will be effective January 1st. So if we do not implement a local tax, we're going to lose approximately $335,000 of tax revenue. I recommend that we impose the 1% locally because we have a lot of non-residents shopping in our retail stores, especially, I mean, our grocery stores. So that way, we have non-residents and residents contributing to our tax base. If we do not implement a local grocery tax, we will then have to rely on property tax to replace that revenue. And as you know, property tax will just come from our commercial and our residential property owners. So I think it's in the best interest of Oak Forest residents to use the local grocery tax in order to replace that income.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Danahill?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfe?
Yes.
Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thanks, Colleen. Okay, we'll move on to Fire Department. Approval of Resolution 2025-07-0496R, authorizing the acceptance of a Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant in the amount of $44,900. We need a motion. Alderman Emmett made the motion, second. Alderman Danahill. We'll have Deputy Chief Paul.
How's it, how are you doing? Thank you for everyone coming out. Thank you, Alderman, Mayor, Administrator. The resolution that we're going to talk about is the brief history about the execution equipment we had and what we're going to move to. When I first started, which was a year ago, I walked through the bays of the Oak Forest. I noticed the rigs. I went through the compartments, and I noticed very obsolete extrication equipment, very heavy and very like, it just wasn't what we needed. We do go to a lot of accidents on I-57, on 80, and this is the equipment that we needed. Firehouse Subs, very hard grant to get. We had great people that went over this proposal. Dana D., who was our Administrator Assistant, who did a lot of the summaries for the narrative, myself, Chief Gary Casper, and the sales rep from Genesis, who was very instrumental in what to write in this grant, and also a gentleman who owns the Firehouse Subs based in Oaklawn. He was very instrumental in the acceptance or for us to get this grant also. We pushed hard. And like I said, it's very hard to get. The biggest thing is that it's no cost to the city. It's fully paid 100% right to the vendor, and we just accept the tools when the chief accepts it, which is an awesome opportunity. The one thing I just want to say, thank you to everyone here for your support. Without you guys, we couldn't make a better department than we are now. The guy I talked about who owns the Firehouse Subs, I just wanted to say a little something about him. He's a fireman also. He owns the subs. He's an owner-operator. And when I called him to submit the forms, I wasn't getting any response from him. And like, maybe like a month later, he finally called back. I'm like, oh, boy, I think, obviously, he didn't get it. He called back, he had a stroke, so he couldn't talk to us at all. But I talked to him just the other day. He's had some speech and motor deficit, which he's, you know, come back from. But he's excited, you know, about us getting this grant and on the approval. It's going to be a great opportunity for us.
Okay. Any questions? Paul, I think this is great. It's great that you guys can get this grant. At any time, you want to talk to the gentleman who owns the Firehouse, tell him we're looking for that restaurant, too.
Yes.
Anyway, could we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Alderman Danahill?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfe?
Yes.
Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you, Paul. EMA. Approval of proposal from Orland Painting and Decorating in the budgeted amount of $12,500 to paint the emergency management garage located at 5301-157 Street. That came from EMA Director David Reyna. Need a motion? Alderman Emmett made the motion. Alderman McCarthy, second. Any questions? Oh, Dave's here. Go ahead, Dave. Sorry.
Evening. So what we're looking to do is, our building was built in the late '60s. The first time it was painted was 1986. The members painted it, so it's now 2026. We're looking to get it painted again. So obviously, I just, we just don't feel that it's safer, proper process painting ourselves like we did, you know, 40 years ago. So that's what we're looking to do. We went out to bid, and Orland Painting came up with the lowest price. They were all using the same paints and everything, so that's what we're looking to do.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? No? Okay, roll call.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Alderman Danahill?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfe?
Yes.
Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you, Dave. Public Works. Approval of payment of pay estimate number one for work completed through July 3rd, 2025, from M&amp;J Asphalt Paving Company in the amount of $822,177.92 related to the 2025 MFT Road Program. Need a motion? Alderman Stewie made the motion, second. Alderman Emmett made the second. Any questions? Go ahead, Alderman Emmett.
As you know, the numerous times we had our streets done, there's been a punch list. I just want to make sure the punch list is being done due to the fact, I think we talked about it in the winter months sometimes at the punch list. So when the director gets back from his vacation, if I could be updated that in my ward, there's a lot of restoration hasn't been done, and I could be waiting for the guys to come with the dirt and the sod. But it seems sometimes we got to fight to get that punch list done. Thank you.
Okay. I think the number one payment is primarily set up within the bid process, but, you know, we do need to hear from Mike on any punch list that he has set up now. So any other question? Alderman Wolfe?
Just due to the fact that this is the first payment for 2025, correct?
Correct.
I mean, not all of the work has been done, but I agree, we need a punch list to see what.
Yeah, no, they're still working on some of the streets and some of the sidewalks and that now. So it's just the first stage of what we've done to this point, so. Okay. Anyone else? Need a roll call, please.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Alderman Danahill?
Yes.
Alderman Keeler? Or, I'm sorry, Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Sabotage. Alderman Wolfe?
Yes.
Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay. Approval of payment of pay estimate number three and the final all work completed related to 2024 MFT Road Program from Iroquois Paving in the amount of $109,439.10. Need a motion? Alderman Danahill made the motion, second. Alderman Stewie, second. Again, this is the final payment, I believe, for the last year's information. I know we did have a punch list on this. I'm assuming, since we don't have the director or the assistant director here, I'm assuming the punch list is taken care of. But before we... Moses? Is it taken? Okay. So we have the punch list taken care of, so anyone have any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Danahill?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolfe?
Yes.
Alderman Coons?
Yes.
Alderman Emmett?
Yes.
Alderman Stewie?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay. Now we'll move into citizens' participation. If anyone would want to address the city council, come to the lecture and give us your name and address for the record.
Right. Michael Clark. Can you all hear me right? Michael Clark, I'm still blind, still see the coyotes. Last two weeks, I've seen four coyotes, two sets of two of them. See a lot of stuff on social media, like, I don't really see them anymore. I'm blind, and I see them, so they're prevalent. That was just a statement. Second statement was, I think Jim went down to Bourbon A to talk to another municipal government about what they're doing as far as coyotes. I think it was for farming. I don't know. I think he was going to talk more about that. Number three was, sent an email a month ago about having a public meeting in a public place in the public interest about coyotes. And I've still heard nothing. I would just like to know what the status is. That's pretty much it. Maybe Moses can talk to it. I don't know.
Michael, one of the things that I think you should bring up, though, is you are starting a website, correct?
Oh, totally forgot. I'm so sorry. Yes. So I haven't got the domain yet, but building a website to try and get a coyote sightings form so that we can get a map and see locally where they are. They are, you know, I've started it personally, but I haven't made it available to the public yet, so look forward to that next time. Thank you, Jim.
Gotcha. No, I have personally talked to people from Bourbon A who were having a meeting on the coyotes. So the one thing that I will tell you, all the meetings that I've been to that they've talked about those projects, has only been two that I've been to, have been at establishments that had space for those meetings. They didn't use any of the city properties for these meetings. They would go off to breweries, or they would go off to other businesses where they could have these meetings. So I do have information coming from the lady who runs that. They do meet all the time at this one brewery down in Bourbon A, and she's going to get me. They had the person who is doing the study for the Cook County people on coyotes. So I'm supposed to get that information from that person, too, when they have it, so. But as of right now, you know, we're just still in the process of trying to figure out how we put together a policy or a practice on what we're doing with coyotes, just so you know. Okay?
About the public meeting. Can I just get a yes or no publicly and why? Maybe statute or a code that would say why I can't do that.
Yeah, as of right now, we're basically not planning on having any public meetings here. You know, at some point, we can, you know, work with you to try to find another location, library, or somewhere else. But as of right now, no, the city building would not be used for a meeting like that. Okay?
That was it. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else want to address the city council? Can give us your name and address for the record?
Excuse me, sir. Can you go to that microphone?
That one's on. I don't know if this one's on.
My name is Eugene Starr. Address 6241 Victoria Drive. I've had an ongoing problem with living on Lake David. Forty-five years ago, I went in a contract with a contractor with the understanding I would do the brickwork and electrical work. Ever since then, well, at that time when the house was completed, I put a 15-foot, a 10-foot dock in the back. I had a boat, little paddle, not a paddleboat, a rowboat. That intrigued me about having, living here. Since then, it's gone downhill. Nothing but algae. The first people who the village contracted with wasn't doing the job. They kicked them out. They got a new one. I haven't seen anybody on that lake. I'm retired. I don't see anything. Just a few days ago, I took some pictures. Dead fish. I've never seen it. I called up, made a few calls, talking to people. The next day, there were some young teenagers in there saying they were part-time. They told my wife, they picked up the dead fish, but they says they couldn't get them all because they couldn't go far enough out. Well, regressing, after about 10 years living here, the silt was coming down. I went to the village hall, told them about it. I says, the EPA says you have to dredge it. Wasn't done. I dismantled the dock, haven't used it since. The kids, you know, you can't fish. I tell them, every time you put the weed killer on, when you do it, I says, it doesn't go up to heaven. It goes down on the bottom. I can't walk out from my, I used to be able to walk out 10 feet. Now, nothing's being done. I'm told, I talked to one of the maintenance people, and I says, do you ever, how often do you get on the lake? They said, we never go to that lake. So I don't know, I'm paying taxes. This has been going on for years. Like I say, 40 years I've been here at least. I've never seen it, and it's just getting worse every year. I wish we could address something. The EPA says it's got to be dredged. I know it's going to be very costly now, but if it was done over the 40 years, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be so costly. I got pictures and that, you know, about the fish and everything, and I was told they couldn't get into certain parts on Lake David, on Dolores, but you can, you can see, it's opening is wide. I was told that there was a fence or something. Well, there's misinformation that you could get into there. I live on the Victoria side, I say. If you need to look at pictures, I mean, the fish are gone now, or most of them, but the stench and then the mosquitoes during the summertime, I can't even sit out in the backyard. Again, like I say, I'm not the only one paying taxes. I know it, but it's affecting me greatly by living there. I wish something could be done. Something done.
If you want to say, share your pictures with our city administrator over here? If you want to share your pictures with the city administrator over here, right here?
Okay, I'm going to share it with him.
Yeah.
And like I say, the fish are basically gone from what I've seen. And after making complaints or calling up the different departments and had billing management and everything, they sent some teenage kids out, and they did remove the fish. I'll show you the pictures.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for your attention.
Alder, oh, wrong. Mayor Hertzmann.
Alderman Danahill.
We've had somebody out there a few years ago. This is the one that we had, a gentleman here multiple times. Public Works did go out there. They started to clean up stuff and everything. I don't think they've ever followed through with everything. That's the problem. And now we got dead fish there, so.
I agree. I've been involved with that pond for 12, more than 12 years, and it's not been easy to deal with, you know, whether it be garbage that's there or the pond itself, which is an issue, so. Alderman Emmett, did you have a?
I'm going to concur with Denise. I do believe we were sitting here in different seats. Jim underneath Hank, I thought he gave directives to get something done over here when we had, we were talking about the name, Lake Dolores, whatever it was. But did anything get done that Hank said we have to get going on this? And then people brought in pictures like this gentleman? And, you know, us sitting up here, we're not the daily people doing the work, but I think there should be some checks and balances. What happened? Did they go over there, remove a couple of trees, and that was it? I mean, a pickup truck can't get back there, but an ATV could get back there. You know, this gentleman's been here at the original. I think he deserves some answers like the other people that came here. The dead fish, I don't know what's going on. All our fish died in our pond up the street for the Park District. We had, you know, company come out. We don't know, they were saying the water was too shallow. Couple of years ago, it was a million two to dredge that, and we didn't have the money. You know, the silt and everything coming from the forest preserve, they say it's four feet of muck, two feet of water. But back some years ago, it was a million two. And we, you know, we don't know how we got into the pond business at the Park District, but we have a pond. But the same thing, I think some Public Works has to tell us, what did they do here of Hank's orders from months ago? I don't know, Chuck, if you remember, I thought Hank gave directives and Joe, I mean, we're all sitting here. What didn't get done is what Denise is saying, I think.
Yeah, and I mean, is there, Mr. Starr, is there like a filtration system that was in there at one time?
Air raiders.
Air raiders?
Air raiders.
It's just two fountains.
Okay. All right.
It's been in for years.
Sir, we need you to speak in the mic, please.
The green on it, like I said, it could go out 20, 25 feet. And they used to spray it, but in a boat, they'd come and spray. Few days, they'd be all dead, right down. Like I say, I could, the kids can't even fish. You know what I mean? It's, there's things that could be done, but for some reason, it's not being done.
I will, I will tell you, I did talk with Finance Director Julian today. The last thing we did was got our engineers, H.R. Green, to go out there and evaluate what they needed to do. But since then, there's nothing else on the books that we contracted or paid for that I'm aware of at this point, so. Yeah. Moses?
So H.R. Green did do a pond study a few years back, did give a presentation to the council. So what everyone needs to remember is ponds, like roads, like water mains, storm sewers, they are infrastructure. So ponds do require maintenance. They're not cheap. There's a couple of options we can do. We can address the water quality, and that's, you know, over $150,000, but it doesn't fix the underlying issue, which is the need to dredge it. You need to dredge it in order to keep up the water quality. I did talk to the Public Works Director today. There's about at least, and I don't want to misquote him, over 800 homes that are tributary to this pond. That's a lot. You also have to figure out that, you know, everyone's personal fertilizers and weed killers ends up in the pond, which affects the quality of the pond. Ponds today are constructed differently than they were 40, 50 years ago. The management of them are different. So what we're looking at here is a retrofit. Just on the information that I have received, it's going to require not only local dollars, but possible grant funding. That's something that we can look into, not just for this pond, but there's other ponds that need to be retrofitted. You know, vegetation around the pond need to be removed. The turf grass around the ponds need to be removed and replaced with native. That helps with stream, I'm sorry, pond bank stability. It helps with water quality because the native vegetation filters the water. I'm very familiar with this. So it's a big, big endeavor, and it's also highly regulated. So anything that we do with those ponds will require permitting through the MWRD, and I'm willing to guess, the Army Corps of Engineers, because ponds that connect to each other each other to a federal water source also require Army Corps permits, which also means it's also regulated. So I haven't looked at that study, I'd be happy to look at it, but that's gonna require, you know, potentially years of planning and grants to fund this, like we do fund our road projects. So, again, ponds are a lot different than they were 40 years ago, it's, it's something that you need to plan and budget for to, to, because it is infrastructure, an important piece of infrastructure.
Alderman Danahill.
We also have to educate the people that live around there, too, you're right, about the fertilizing their lawns and everything, because that runoff goes into the ponds, and then that creates all that muck and all that stuff that goes on in the ponds. So all, all the neighbors are gonna have to know about, you know, maybe you can't fertilize your lawn.
One of the immediate things that we can do is a communication to talk about lawn maintenance best practices. The other thing is too, is to kind of watch what goes into drains, so when one mows their lawn, to make sure the grass clippings do not end up in the gutters, which end up in the drains, which ends up in the pond. So, at least in the short term, we can put together some best practice recommendations as kind of damage control of what ends up in the ponds, but in terms of dredging and other things that are needed, especially over a period of 50 years, you know, we're gonna have to allocate resources to that, and we'll pursue any other grants that are available to, to do, to dredge this pond, which is gonna be a big, big endeavor.
Alderman McCarthy.
Hopefully, the lagoon also is not in great shape, and we can get grants for, even though the Park District had taken it over somehow.
I don't know how, yeah.
And, I'm just saying, because, I mean, I get complaints from every neighborhood, all the kids used, I used to fish here when I was a kid, and it's just, it's just horrible seeing the way it looks now.
Anyone else want to address the council? Please state your name and address, please, for the record.
Council, my name is Dr. Dominique Starr, and I'm located at 6241 Victoria Drive. I came with a speech today regarding this pond, but I'm pleased to see that everyone is on the same page and understanding the serious nature of this. As you were talking about addressing best practices, I was hoping maybe that when we do get the community involved, we can talk about the serious risks of the use of pesticides and herbicides for especially our children, because the mist from the lake, that hits me when I'm right on the patio of the house. Our gardens are there, there's underground networks that are food, our homegrown food, when there's a heavy rain, it rises, but there's also the mycelial and complex soil systems that are absorbing all of those chemicals. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I look forward to there being results.
Moses, it's, at some point, we should sit down and go through whatever the best practices are and put that together to get started, if nothing else, okay? All right. Anyone else want to address the council? No? Okay. Old business. Alderman Emmett.
It's not to repetitive, Cook County's actually cutting the grass on 151st, so I thanks Nicole again, and Paul for getting that done. I had a couple incidents in my ward, I was attending church, I was getting texts, I'm gonna sit down with Moses, I've already been in contact with him over the weekend, I appreciate it, a couple incidents, and I'm sure I'll be getting back to the board and everything of what occurred in my ward over the weekend, so that'll be in the future, and Moses has been on it from day one, I appreciate it, Moses, and hopefully we'll have some resolutions to that. Thank you.
Anyone else have old business? Okay. New business? All right, we'll move on, we're going into an executive session. This executive session is to enter into discussion about collective bargaining with one of our bargaining units. At this point, we'll go into executive session, closed session for that, there will be no other business that will be happening at, at that time.
Mayor, can I give, can I just give an update about?
Oh, I'm sorry, Moses, you're right, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to use this as an opportunity just to kind of update not, not only the council, but also the public, just asking the public just to pay attention to the communication that the city just put out about e-bikes and e-scooters. Please refer to that, read up on that. Any questions, comments, suggestions, we'd be happy to hear from the public about e-bikes and e-scooters. Essentially, as the communication notes, that there are rules and regulations in place for e-bikes. There's different types of e-bikes, certain bikes that go a certain speed are only allowed to be ridden by individuals 16 and up, it's right out of the state law, it's also part of the city's code that was updated two years ago. Moving on to e-scooters, the communication notes that e-scooters are also not permitted upon sidewalks, roadways, and other public ways of the city. Everybody here, including the public, might be reading about what other communities are doing in terms of allowing or not allowing e-scooters. A new law came out in 2024 that gives municipalities the authority to regulate and permit e-scooters on the public way. Oak Forest thus far has not passed any ordinance to allow e-scooters off one's own private property. You know, I'm gonna suggest to the council, and obviously the council can direct me what they'd like to do, just to kind of use this time to, you know, see what others are doing, just kind of letting things play out in terms of what are the best practices. There have been incidents, you know, one of which did occur in, in the city, where an individual riding an e-scooter did not give a vehicle the right of way, and ultimately got hit by the vehicle and, and broke a few bones. You know, it could have been a lot worse, and that individual who was hit by a car was cited, not the car driver, but the person riding the e-scooter. There's been other instances in, in other towns that people have been seriously injured. So I'm just gonna use this as kind of a PSA, an opportunity for parents to talk to their children about the safeties and the rules regarding e-bikes and e-scooters. It's, it's very important that one understands what the rules are, especially when it comes to e-scooters. Right now, e-scooters are only permitted on one's private property, so no sidewalks, no roadways, and, and other public places. So we're gonna use this time just to kind of learn from others about what other people are doing. You know, I, if there's feedback from the community or comments, we'd be happy to hear from you, you can email me, and I will certainly share your comments with the council as this progresses, but this has gotten to the point where some communities are taking some drastic action with regards to riders that are not riding in accordance with the law, you know, especially underage youth, those that are not, do not have a driver's license, but it's really, real important that parents get in, in front of this to advise, you know, what the rules are, and it's also the safety considerations about these vehicles. So I just wanted to say something on camera here for, for everyone just to pay attention to our communication. If there's any comments or anything, I'd be happy to hear, not only from the mayor and council, but also from the public, so just kind of stay tuned, but we are monitoring what's happening here in our region. And that's it for tonight.
Okay. All right, now we can move. Need a motion to go into executive session, Alderman Emmett made the motion, Alderman Danahill made a second. Again, we will be discussing collective bargaining, at the end of the, the discussion and executive session, there will be no further business done. Thank you.
Do we need a vote? Do we vote on it?
I need a vote, I'm losing it.
All right, we need a, we need a vote before we go in, please.
Alderman Emmett.
Yes, yes, yes.
Alderman Stewie.
Yes.
Alderman Danahill, yes. Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfe.
Yes.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Now we can go into executive session.